May the thirteenth, 2019, and we'll begin our meeting with the prayer and pledge of allegiance, led by Councilor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I'd like to invite Reverend Turner of the Travelers Rest Missionary Baptist Church to join us. He's a proud member of the Indy Ten Points Coalition, and himself, and a number of other individuals with Ten Points are here tonight. I'm a big fan of Ten Points and the work they do to help keep Indianapolis safe, and wanted to invite Reverend Turner to offer their prayer tonight. Reverend?
Eternal God, we come to you this day, this hour. We come asking, and most of all, we come thanking you. We ask heaven that you save us, oh God, by thy name, and to judge us by thy strength. Hear our prayers, oh God, and please give ear unto the words of our mouth. We come saying thank you, my heavenly Father, for giving us the ability to talk to you in prayer, realizing that when prayer goes up, blessings come down. And we do thank you for giving us the knowledge to discover thy power, realizing that you have all power in thy hands. My heavenly Father, we need you down here; there's nothing I can say that you don't already know. But we're, in this prayer, reminding ourselves that there is a God. And we want to say that there is so much going on in today's society, and we know it's all because of sin. Men and women would much rather lie than to speak righteousness. My heavenly Father, we ask you to put your loving arms around every community around this nation, my heavenly Father, because Ten Point Coalition and so many other organizations, we are fighting against crimes, and we prefer to have no violence. And Lord, I just want to say that we reject violence, my heavenly Father, and we know that we can live and do better than what we are doing. We object to it, my heavenly Father, because when it tends to do good, it's temporary. We object to it, my heavenly Father, because when it tends to do bad, it's permanent. And we ask you in this prayer, my heavenly Father, please, sir, please, sir, put a loving, caring, and a sharing heart, my heavenly Father, right now. Erase all the anger, all the vengeance, my heavenly Father. Make us realize that it is you and you only, my heavenly Father, that's above all things. We do pray for everybody that's here and their family, in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you guys for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
Counselors, please select your green button to indicate your attendance. There are twenty-three members present. Counselors Clay and Colter have asked to be excused for this evening. The next item on our agenda is a welcome, a welcome to our newest member, Counselor Andy Harris. Counselor Harris, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I'm learning. Thank you very much. Very blessed to know many of you, good works that you have done for the city, and that many good hearts here, and excited to work with everybody. And it's gonna take me a long time to be known like Ms. Marilyn Feaster is, but I'm gonna do good work for District Fifteen, and excited to be here. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guests and visitors. Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to acknowledge in the audience tonight, Mr. Tyler Richardson. He's involved in the Fountain Square Neighborhood Association, and as well as the Southeast Neighborhood Economic Development Committee. We thank you for being here tonight, sir.
Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to acknowledge a woman who we all know and many admire, Mary Ann Glick. I wanted to call you something else by your other name, your married name. But Mary Ann Glick, would you stand, and Ryan Brady, who works for the Glick Foundation, stand and be acknowledged? And, Mr. President, if I may, one more?
Counselor Jackson, please.
Thank you. Pastor James Jackson of Fever and Prayer Church, and all his wonderful youth he brought out tonight for Clean for Green. Stand up and be acknowledged. Thank you.
Very good. The next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk. Oh, just a moment. Counselor Maori.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome Pam Duhamel and her comrades here this evening.
Very good. The next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City-County Council, Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held in the City-County Building in the council chambers on Monday, May thirteenth, 2019, at seven o'clock PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before the regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Vob Osley, President, City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, a call to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Wednesday, April tenth, 2019, a copy of a public notice, a notice of public hearing on proposal numbers one fifty, one fifty-one, and one fifty-three, 2019, said hearing to be held on Monday, April twenty-second, 2019, at five-thirty PM in room two sixty of the City-County Building. Respectfully, Sarita Hughes, Clerk of the City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have copied with my signature and delivered this day to the Clerk of the City-County Council, Sarita Hughes, the following ordinances: fiscal ordinance numbers seven through nine, general ordinance numbers twenty-three and twenty-four, special resolution numbers twelve through fifteen. Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent?
Consent.
And the next item on our agenda is approval of the journals for April the eighth, 2019. Do I have consent?
Consent.
We'll now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. And the first item on the agenda is proposal number sixty-one, introduced by all counselors, which honors the work and the life of Mary Ann Glick.
The Council, City of Indianapolis, Marion County, City-County Council Resolution Number Eighteen, Twenty-Nineteen, a special resolution recogni-- oh, did we go out of order? Or am I out of order? I'm off today. Special Resolution, City-County Special Resolution Number Sixteen, Twenty-Nineteen, a special resolution honoring the work and the life of Mary Ann Glick. Whereas an entrepreneur, philanthropist, community leader, and artist, Mary Ann Glick's career has encompassed all of these roles. And whereas Mary Ann Glick received her bachelor's degree in elementary education and a master's degree in educational psychology from Butler University. And whereas, for twenty-five years, Mary Ann ran Glick Trainee Associates, a firm she founded in nineteen eighty-six to assist organizations to enhance employee productivity and effectiveness.
And whereas, Mary Ann is an accomplished artist with paintings being accepted and juried in competitions and winning awards in Indiana, Michigan, Illinois, and Florida. She often contributes her paintings to assist nonprofit organizations such as the Children's Bureau, Girls Inc., Dress for Success, Planned Parenthood, United Way, and the Women's Fund. And whereas, an Indianapolis native, Mary Ann has a connection to the community and has worked to fulfill her personal mission of igniting, inspiring, and directing energy for positive action. The fulfillment of this mission is evident in her commitment to the far east side of Indianapolis. She has been a vocal champion and advocate for the investment on the far east side, and through her leadership, Glick Philanthropies, I assume it's a misspelling, has invested more than ten million dollars in the far east side over the past four years. Ann?
Whereas, Mary Ann has received many honors and awards, including the Sagamore of the Wabash in 2014, the Women of Influence 2012, Touchstone Awards 2011, and 2018, the Charles L. Westler Award by the Greater Indianapolis Progress Committee. And whereas, Mary Ann is perhaps most well-known for her community service. She's a founder of the Executive Women's Training Program, chair of the board for the Eugene and Marilyn Glick Family Foundation, and served as trustee for Ball State University, Central Indiana Community Foundation, the Women's Hospital, Habeit of the Humanity, and Prevent Blindness Indiana. And whereas...
Mary Ann is a respected friend, mentor, intellectual giant, tireless advocate, and community champion for whose mission is to lead support efforts that break the cycle of poverty by creating youth, family, and community success. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis, Marion County, Indiana, Section One, the City-County Council is pleased to recognize Mary Ann Glick for her community service to Indianapolis, but especially to the residents of the far east side for making them a priority. Section Two, the Council wishes Mary Ann Glick continued success in future endeavors. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. May I have an opportunity to have the honorary say a few words?
Please.
Thank you. Before I do, I do like to acknowledge Ryan Brady. He's with the Glicks. He's been very prevalent in making things and grants and supportive services happen throughout the city, but especially on the far east side, so I want to acknowledge you today. Do you have a couple of words or anything you want to say? Thank you. And now, Mary Ann, thank you.
Thanks, Lakeisha. Thank you. I really appreciate this honor. It is a real privilege for me to be able to serve in the way that I do. And there really is nothing more important to me than trying to create opportunities to make sure that everyone in our community has an opportunity to reach their full potential. And in whatever way I can help that, that's what my mission is. So thank you very much for the recognition, and I will say that this is like my right hand. Without Ryan, I couldn't do all that I do, and the Glick Fund couldn't do all that it does. So thank you so much.
Here's a special counsel candid.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Keep serving.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number one ninety-seven, which honors Ben Davis High School's television program for their achievements in the Indiana Association of School Broadcasters State Finals.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is my honor again, once again, this year, and as I have the last three and a half years, to recognize Ben Davis High School for some excellence that they continue to do in our city. And of course, we all know that's the best high school in the state of Indiana as well. City-County Council Special Resolution Number Seventeen, 2019, a special resolution recognizing Ben Davis High School's television program for their achievements in the Indiana Association of School Broadcasters State Finals. Whereas, the Ben Davis High School's television program finished second runner-up, third place overall, with BDTV staff finishing second place, magazine, third place, TV Video School of the Year, and Henry Wicker finished third place. Cinematography, and whereas, the Lord opened the door for BDTV in 2002. Since then, they have won the Indiana Association of State Broadcasters, 2004 High School Television School of the Year, IASB runner-up several years, over forty IASB individual state champions, nine Emmy Awards from the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences, and many awards from the Ball State J-Day Competition, Women's Press Club Contest, and various state, regional, and national competitions. And whereas, last year, BDTV's very own Evelyn Sanchez was selected as the number one in the World Youth Journalism International 2018 Student Journalist of the Year. There are several students working in TV stations all over the United States, many students working in film production throughout the world, and former BDTV students working in corporate America. Ben Davis Television is a production company that informs, educates, and entertains the world about all the positive things happening in Wayne Township and central Indiana. Students will master five components of digital media: camera, audio, lighting, writing, and editing. It is a hands-on class that prepares scholars to succeed in the workforce, college, and/or enlistment into the armed services. Counselor McHenry.
Whereas, BDTV continues to learn by doing, by producing a weekly twenty-minute newscast, providing content for clients such as the 2012 Super Bowl Host Committee, by providing a video for the Volunteer Appreciation Party, Stewart Speaker Series, Indianapolis Airport, Dr. Butts, Wayne Township staff, and anyone else that is interested. And whereas, BDTV has grown in seventeen years with close to seventy students in our initiative, juniors, and seniors. We currently have twenty digital cameras and an avid editing lab that seats twenty. We can be seen by millions via our website and YouTube channel. A lot has changed in seventeen years, but our diligence, discipline, and effort has not. We will continue to produce servant leaders that will be agents of the change in this world. If it's about you and me, it's on BDTV. Now therefore...
Be it resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section One, the Indianapolis City-County Council recognizes Ben Davis High School's television program for their achievements in the Indiana Association of School Broadcasters State Finals. Section Two, the City-County Council recognizes the hard work, dedication, and achievements of the Ben Davis High School's television program. Mr. President, I so move.
And the motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Right now, I'd like to give the opportunity for one of the students to say a few words.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Einstein. I'm a senior in the Area Thirty-One Career Center's TV Broadcasting Program. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for this opportunity tonight, for allowing us to speak, and for recognizing us. It means a lot to us. I've gotten a number of unique, life-changing experiences through my time in the TV broadcasting program. It's allowed me to discover what my passion is, which is going to inevitably be in media and cinema arts, and it's given me hands-on, real-world experience that will help me to turn my passion into a profession. To put in the work and to be recognized by a number of outlets, such as here tonight, to be hired by real businesses to produce content for advertisements, to be a two-time state champion for the Indiana Association of School Broadcasters State Competition, and among a number of other awards, I'll be attending Indiana University Bloomington Campus next fall, and I'm going to be going in as a, under the prestigious Media Honors Students Program. And all of that is thanks to what I have learned and the opportunities I have gotten through this class that in high school is something that you can't get anywhere else. It's one of a kind. It's life-changing, and it's making the difference. That's gonna put me and put everyone else who's involved in the program, not one, not two, but twenty steps ahead of everybody else who doesn't have these unique opportunities that we get. Thank you.
I wouldn't be surprised if we're gonna see some movies or something with this kid, probably making it, or maybe even an office one day. I'd like to now introduce you to Mr. Dennis Goins. Mr. Goins started teaching right as I was coming out of high school, I think my senior year. Nothing I can say can tell you about what this man is made of. When I talk to staff members at the high school and people who know him, it is commonly stated with this man about the work that he does, the belief that he has in the school and the kids that he works for, and his religion. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Dennis Goins.
Well, thank you. After Jacob's speech, I won't say much. He's very talkative and confident, and we're just thankful to have students like this. I used to be the gentleman right there. For twenty years, I was a sports photographer for many stations here in the city, and worked throughout the country, from the Sydney-Australia Olympics to the appearance on David Letterman's show. And then the Lord opened the door at Ben Davis High School seventeen years ago, and we walked out by faith, and we continue to step by faith. And we're so thankful for the opportunities that have been afforded to me to really be the difference in these young people's lives. And I take on that responsibility, and I look forward every day to teaching, probably the most noble profession there is. So I'm very thankful to be recognized, but I would not be able to do it without the young people that stand behind me. And this is only a few of them, because many of them are very involved in other activities, so they couldn't be here tonight, and they're so, so sorry. And then there are others that are working in TV stations here in town and throughout the country, and film production throughout the world. So this has been a great opportunity, and I thank you very much for this recognition as we continue to inform and educate and entertain the world about all the positive things that are happening in Wayne Township and in central Indiana. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number two-two-seven, which recognizes the Clean for Green Jobs Training Program.
If I can get a, Pastor Jackson, you wanna stand here and have a youth come? Come on up. Squeeze in, guys. Squeeze in. Come on through. You can come on this side right here. Come on through. Right here. All right. Let's have a few shirts over here to the side. All right, there we go. City-County Council Special Resolution Number Eighteen, Twenty-Nineteen, a special resolution recognizing Clean for Green Jobs Training Program. Whereas, Clean for Green was started in the summer of 2012 by Pastor James Jackson of Fever and Prayer Church as a summer job training program on the far east side, but quickly evolved to a citywide program in 2013. As a result, the program was transitioned to operate under the umbrella of the Far East Side Action Coalition, FIAC. And whereas, recognizing the large amount of debris and trash in the community, FIAC engaged young people at ages fourteen to eighteen to clean up the trash and be paid. In 2012, one hundred and sixty-seven youth were hired, and four thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars was paid out in youth stipends. And whereas, since its inception, the program has employed over one thousand youth during summer breaks and at other times during the year. And whereas, the mission of the Clean for Green is to provide soft skills training, mentoring, and health and wellness to youth ages fourteen to eighteen in Marion County. Youth will be, youth are engaged in positive activities, as well as engaging with mentors, providing those life skills and spiritual direction, as they work for cash, which prevents them from seeking cash in negative ways. Whereas, the purpose of the Clean for Green Job Training Program is to save lives. Let me say that again. Whereas, the purpose of the Clean for Green Jobs Training Program is to save lives. By changing the trajectory of youth on the far east side, this initiative provides the city's most underserved and underappreciated youth the opportunity to be contributors to their households, be productive citizens with hope and pride in their community, and it provides an alternative to crime. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Section One, the City-County Council recognizes Pastor James Jackson and the Clean for Green Jobs Training Program for their commitment to the lives of the youth in the community. Section Two, the Council also wishes continued success of Pastor Jackson and the Clean for Green Program. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. May I have the opportunity to let Pastor Jackson say some words?
Please.
Thank you. Pastor Jackson, you've been a great leader in our community, a cheerleader, been very instrumental, been progressive, working with our youth, and also your spiritual walk in saving souls and lives, the lives of our youth, so many who have alternatives to crime. I personally had the opportunity, I've been working with you for over fifteen years. I know this program works for the alternatives it has provided to youth in the community that could have ended up in jail or otherwise dead, and he has a proven track record to show his data. And for those who could not be in the program, there's a few that have ended up dead, because we haven't provided them an opportunity for employment or alternative to crime. And I know your program is working. I want to personally thank you for your work and acknowledge you today. I want you to say some words.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson, and ladies and gentlemen of the Council, President Osley, and the leadership team here, serving our city. And we brought quite a few young people, and we discovered that youth unemployment has been as high as it is in America, and here in the city of Indianapolis, we have the summer component, but recently, since 2012, we do this all year round, every Saturday. And one of the young people that's here, Devon Bates, he's been in the program several years now. He has a few things to say.
Good evening. I would like to start off by saying that the Clean for Green Program has been very beneficial to the community, especially on the far east side, and there's a lot of things that youth, as far as my generation and generations that come after me, haven't been given the opportunity, as far as being privileged with certain opportunities such as jobs or monetary funding. And I believe that the program gives you a lot of opportunities that many people wouldn't get these opportunities sending around at home or going to a regular job. The mentoring also helps with developing different life scenarios and situations that I could take somewhere else, and these also give me characteristics and traits that other people will not have. And this also helps the community as a whole, because not only do we pick up the trash, we're also learning valuable life lessons that we can carry with us. Thank you.
Well, Devon is one of hundreds of young people who have been in the program since 2012, and time wouldn't permit me to thank all of our collaborating partners, DPW, the City of Indianapolis, and many, many more, Zionsville, Ten Point, Ten Point, Indianapolis, the Council. Thank you so much for all that you all have helped us to do. Dr. Wayne Moore, who has partnered with us down through the years, Reverend Sample, and so many more. I want to encourage those of you who are here, who are serving on the Council, to continue to find ways to help programs like ours. There's a biblical principle in the prophecy of Jeremiah that says that we are to work for the peace of the city, for when the city has peace, then we will all have peace. And that has been the driving principle since 2012 for our program, that as long as we have no peace in our city, that we will continue to collaborate with others to make sure that we reach that goal. And thank you again, Counselor Jackson, for this recognition. We appreciate it, and again, thank you all as well.
Counselors, this is what I was talking about. I'm gonna push to get this program funded, so thank you.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number two-two-eight, which recognizes... The next item on our agenda is proposal number 228, which recognizes the winning team and participants of the 2019 Battle of the Books.
Okay, we'll get you back.
Yes.
I'm gonna buy him, he's a primary graduate.
Yeah, I know.
I didn't know that.
I just found out.
Okay, we got three young ladies here. Ms. Greer, Vanessa, Vanessa.
Who's got the pins? I'll do the pins while you're reading.
I got some. And Ms. Thomas, that must be you, and I know you. And you, Diane. Okay, thanks.
Kate. City County Council Special Resolution Number 192019, a special resolution recognizing the winning team and participants of the 2019 Battle of the Books. Whereas, the skill of reading is essential to an informed community, the ability to develop empathy and to solve problems proactively and creatively, and whereas, reading can provide windows, mirrors, and sliding glass doors into the lives and experiences of ourselves and others, and whereas, high school students have so many claims on their time, including homework, athletics, extracurricular activities, jobs, and social media, that they are often excused from reading for pleasure, and...
Whereas, the librarians from the Indianapolis Public Library, IndyPL, and school library media specialists across the city have income in common goal in enticing more teens to read, and whereas, to approximately 46 teenagers from 11 schools read and study and discuss eight books selected by their school library media specialist and Indy Public Library, teen librarians from among those books nominated for discussion, distinguished by Elliot Rosewater Award, and that is awarded by the Indiana Library Foundation. The students form teams and practice before, during, and after school in preparation for the Indianapolis Public, Indianapolis Battle of the Books, and...
Thank you. And whereas, the winners of the 2019 Battle of the Books is the team from Perry Meridian High School, with the teams from Ben Davis, University High School, and Pike High School as runners-up. Sorry, Counselor. Where do we go now? Other participants include students from Arsenal Tech, Ben Davis, Ben Davis 9th Grade Center, Berbuff Jesuit, Cardinal Ritter Cathedral, Decatur Central, and Park Tudor High Schools. Now therefore, be it resolved.
By the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City Council recognizes Perry Meridian High School for winning the 2019 Battle of the Books. Section 2, the council congratulates the Perry Meridian team, as well as each team, for their participation, and wishes each student great success in their future endeavors. And I so move.
Second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, back to the speakers.
And now we'll hear from the Perry Meridian team?
Yes.
With your permission.
Yes.
Well, thank you for the recognition. This Battle of the Books has really provided an opportunity for kids to have a structured reason to read outside of their love of reading. It really highlights the importance of libraries in our communities and media centers in our schools. The school media centers provide the place for students to gather and connect and be exposed to a variety of books, and activities such as these give students a goal of something to work toward. And these kids prepare just like an athletic team, and they cram, and they read, and they get into the details, and they question. And students make friendships and discover a love of reading and learning and questioning. And so, thank you for the recognition. And I introduce Caitlin Greer, who will also make a statement.
Hi, I'm Caitlin, I'm the president of Book Club, and I just, I want to thank you again for recognizing us, because reading is very important to us, and it may not be as popular as some of the other things in school, but it teaches us to be more empathetic people, because books force us to look through the perspective of others. And it's also very helpful in school, in like writing essays and helping us with growing our vocabulary. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd also like to thank the head librarian, Jackie Knights. Now, this is here tonight, she has helped these schools to acquire the reading that these children or students need to better themselves in their future endeavors. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 229, which recognizes Pamela Duhamel for being named the 2019 Emergency Communication Employee of the Year.
I'm gonna let her family get down here as well, they're here with us this evening as well. Special resolution recognizing Pam Duhamel for being named 2019 Emergency Communication Employee of the Year. Whereas Pam Duhamel is a 28-year veteran of the Marion County Sheriff's Office. She is considered an integral part of the Marion County Sheriff's 911 Center, which is a backbone to public safety throughout Marion County. And whereas, serving as a training director and assistant public safety answering point director, Director Duhamel is considered an integral part of the Marion County 911 Sheriff's Office, 911 Center, as she oversees the training of 911 dispatchers and special projects for the 911 Center. And whereas, Director Duhamel has gone above and beyond to ensure citizens and officers' safety during the transition to a new computer-aided dispatch CAD system, and consistently gathered feedback from dispatchers to ensure adequately functioning functionality of the new program. And whereas, also included in her duties, Director Duhamel is responsible for ensuring the standard operating procedure at the 911 Center are current and up to date, and she is accredited with playing a vital role in ensuring that the 911 Center retains accreditation with the Commission for Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, assuring compliance with 62 standards. And whereas, because of her dedication to the Marion County Sheriff's Office and the 911 Center, Director Pam Duhamel has been named the 2019 Emergency Communications Employee of the Year. And now therefore, be resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council recognizes Pam Duhamel for being named the 2019 Emergency Communication Employee of the Year. The council heartily extends its appreciation and gratitude to Director Duhamel's dedicated service and wishes her continued success in all she does. The mayor is invited to join in signing this resolution by affixing his signature here too, which he has. Section 4, the resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. This special resolution was sponsored by Counselor Maury and was passed by the City County Council on this 13th day of May 2019. I so move.
Second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, back to the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to say thank you to Pam and her whole family. They've been a huge supporter of mine and believer. I can't tell you how much I appreciate everything you've done for me and how much you've helped me along the way, and I would like to invite her up to the podium to speak if...
Please.
I would just like to say thank you very much. This is an honor and a surprise. I did not know I was going to receive this evening, so thank you very much. I appreciate this award, and I would not be successful if it was not for my family, my coworkers, and my bosses, who have stayed behind me every step of the way to ensure the fact that I have received everything that I needed in order to make sure that the communications training program was successful. So, I appreciate them and their support that they have given to me, so thank you very much, everyone.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 230, which recognizes Purdue University Extension Community Economics and Leadership Program, CELP, for its innovation in civic leadership and community-based economics training.
City County Special Resolution Number 21, a special resolution recognizing Purdue University Extension Community Economics and Leadership Program, or CELP, for its innovation in civic leadership and community-based economics training. Whereas, CELP is a four-month intensive leadership program intended to maximize leadership strengths, understand a community's economic functions, and improve the ability to design innovative solutions to community challenges. And whereas, this program was created for mid-level local and state government employees, millennials who want to develop technical skills to empower others, community development practitioners, entrepreneurs, and aspiring community leaders. It is an investment in the mindset change that creates meaningful perspectives, develops resilience, and cultivates improved understanding for the ongoing community context to solve problems and make good decisions. And whereas...
Because of this program, over 70% of graduates have stepped up to leadership roles and are guiding important community initiatives and workplace projects, and have increased an understanding of government finance, property taxes, and civic engagement. Now therefore, we ask these things be resolved by the council, and Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, back to the speakers.
And we're gonna hear from George now.
All right, thank you so much for the recognition. We are all aware that for the future of Indianapolis, what we really need to focus on is, you know, building a capacity of leaders within our community. So, the Community Economics and Leadership Program is focused on really building the leaders who would actually, you know, lead this city to become a vital city. So, we have a cross-section of people throughout the city, and I'm sure all the councilists here have somebody who is represented in their community, and we are so pleased that we are building a capacity of people within the city to be able to get into leadership roles, understand local government, understand the economics of the community, and also use new ideas like design thinking to look at old problems in new ways. So, we are privileged for this recognition, and we are very grateful for all the work that you do for Indianapolis. I would invite one of the students to say a few words. We're gonna get Carla over here. We always have. So, Carla, if you could say a few words on behalf of this course.
Thank you all for this recognition. Just in the short time that I've been a part of this program, I've learned so much about the inner workings of the city, about the inner workings of funding mechanisms, philanthropic organizations, and support efforts that can improve and grow and empower communities around the city. So, we appreciate you for recognizing us, and I'm gonna get you, George, put me on the spot. But thank you again, and we appreciate you all and the work that you do.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 64, referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals number 64, 70, 71, 111, 112. Thank you. Proposal number 64, reappoints Anthony Bridgeman to the Board of Business and Neighborhood Services. Proposal number 70, reappoints April Pratt to the Indianapolis City Market Cooperation Board of Directors. Proposal number 71, renominates Diane Carter to the Speedway Economic Development Commission. Proposal number 111, reappoints Brian Barton to the Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. Proposal number 112, reappoints Kathy Good to the Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. All proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 11 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Madam, Chairwoman...
Did I miss one?
No. Motion's properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries, 21 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 148, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 148 confirms the mayor's appointment of Mr. John E. Hall as executive director of the Indianapolis Housing Authority. Mr. Hall stated that he has been politically appointed to run a couple of housing agencies across the country. He stated that he has been known as a reformer to ensure that agencies are performing at their highest standard and ability, and to ensure that residents are receiving their most beneficial services. Mr. Hall shared his vision for the agency, starting with good governance, creating housing policies that address the unmet needs for the county, as well as building effective teams, which will be critical for sustaining the organization and assisting with restoring and maintaining public trust. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 11 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries, 21 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 182, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals number 182 and 183 together.
Consent.
Thank you. Proposal number 182 corrects the term ending date of Esther Carter Day as an appointee to the Indianapolis Housing Agency Board of Directors. Proposal number 183 corrects the term ending date for Sherri Seibert as an appointee to the Indianapolis Housing Agency Board of Directors. Proposal number 182 and 183 both passed out of committee by a vote of 9 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries, 21 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 84, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 84, 2019, reappoints Arfarina Belu to the Domestic Balance Fatality Review Team. Ms. Belu stated that she is the chief deputy coroner with the Marion County Coroner's Office. She also stated that she has served on the Domestic Balance Fatality Review Team since its inception in 2009, serving as a chair for four years. Counselor Simpson moves, seconded by Counselor Feaster. Send proposal 84, 2019 to the full council. They do pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of 10 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Counselor Fanning. Motion carries, 22 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 126, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 126, 2019, approves the mayor's appointment of Ernest V. Malone to the chief of the Indianapolis Fire Department. Chief Malone was present and stated that he is honored to be considered for reappointment for the chief of the Indianapolis Fire Department. He said that he enjoys the opportunity to continue serving as the chief, and has been a privilege to work with all the men and women of IFD. He had glowing support reviews from the council members on the committee. Counselor Feaster... Counselor Feaster moves, seconded by Counselor Fanning, to send proposal one twenty-six to the full council. They do pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of ten to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-two to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one twenty-seven. Refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal one twenty-seven, two thousand and nineteen, approves the mayor's appointment of Brian Roach as chief of police for the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department. Chief Roach stated that he is honored to be the leader of I M P D. They are working on reducing the homicide rate for Indianapolis, and he is disappointed that the city is there today. The chief also stated that he, in the last two years, violent crimes have been reduced by eight percent, and property crimes have been reduced by thirteen percent, that the men and women of I M P D are giving everything they have and doing everything they can in order to be more understanding and relational with the community they serve. Chief Roach also said that he has seen a turnaround in the reduction of confrontation relationships they have previously had in certain neighborhoods, and he also stated that he is honored to serve along with the men and women of I M P D. Counselor Feaster moves, seconded by Counselor Oliver, to send proposal one twenty-seven to the full council. They do pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of ten to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Counselor Jackson. Motion carries twenty to two. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number two hundred and seven, introduced by Counselor Simpson, referred to the Administration and Finance Committee, approves an additional appropriation of thirty-six thousand dollars in the two thousand and nineteen budget of the Information Services Agency Enhanced Access Fund for the city's kiosk pilot program. Proposal numbers two oh eight and two oh nine refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal number two oh eight, introduced by Counselor Fanning, approves the issuance of economic development tax increment revenue bonds for Northwood Partners L.P. in a maximum aggregate principal amount not to exceed twenty-five million dollars to finance a portion of the cost of acquisition, renovation, and equipping of a multifamily housing facility to be known as Northwood on the Trail, consisting of two hundred and fifty-four apartment units together with functionally related and subordinate facilities such as recreational facilities and parking areas located at eighty-nine twenty-one Compton Street in District Two, and approves and authorizes other actions in respect thereto. Proposal number two oh nine, introduced by Counselor Lewis, approves the statement of benefits of Covant Central Fabricary Services, Inc., and N R F C Indianapolis Holdings, LLC, an applicant for tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. Proposal numbers two ten through two twenty refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number two ten, introduced by Counselor Shreve, approves residential permit parking for seven-zero-nine Fletcher Avenue in District Sixteen. Proposal number two eleven, introduced by Counselor Coulter, approves intersection controls at Remington Court and Snug Harbor Drive in District Twenty-three. Proposal number two twelve, introduced by Counselor Harris, approves intersection controls at Vermont Street and Auburn Street in District Fifteen. Proposal number two thirteen, introduced by Counselor Evans, approves a speed limit reduction in the Southwest Hills and Sierra Creek subdivisions in District Twenty-two. Proposal number two fourteen, introduced by Counselor McHenry, approves a speed limit reduction in the Wilson Pine Crest subdivision in District Six. Proposal number two fifteen, introduced by Counselor Simpson, approves parking restrictions near Broadway Place and Thirty-Eighth Street in District Seven. Proposal number two sixteen, introduced by Counselor McQuillan, approves a speed limit reduction in various subdivisions in the area of Seventy-first Street and Shadlin Avenue in District Four. Proposal number two seventeen, introduced by Counselor Holliday, approves a speed limit reduction in the Heartland Crossing subdivision in District Twenty. Proposal number two eighteen, introduced by Counselor Clay, approves intersection controls at Balboa Drive, Monterey Road, and Marcel Road in District Thirteen. Proposal number two nineteen, introduced by Counselor Shreve, approves residential permit parking near East Street and McCarty Street in District Sixteen. Proposal number two twenty, introduced by Counselor Osley, approves intersection controls at Halifax and Crystal Drives in District Eleven. Proposal numbers two twenty-one through two twenty-five refer to the Rules and Public Policy Committee and were introduced by Counselor Osley. Proposal number two twenty-one approves the expansion of the professional sports development area and the extension of the capture of covered taxes attributable to income earned. Proposal number two twenty-two amends the code to extend the county emissions tax and the supplemental auto rental excise tax. Proposal number two twenty-three approves the bond or lease borrowings of the Capital Improvement Board of Managers related to Bankers Life Fieldhouse. Proposal number two twenty-four approves borrowing of the Capital Improvement Boards of Managers per an agreement with the Treasurer of the State of Indiana. Proposal number two twenty-five approves an additional appropriation of twenty-nine million dollars in the budget, in the two thousand and nineteen budget of the Capital Improvement Board of Managers operating and buying funds for certain payments related to the updated Fieldhouse operating agreement. Proposal number two twenty-six, introduced by Counselor Robinson, refers to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, approves the mayor's appointment of Brenda Keller to serve as the director of the Indianapolis Marion County Forensic Services Agency. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is special orders priority business. Proposal number two oh six, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number two zero six approves the issuance of an economic development tax increment revenue bond for Block Twenty Development, LLC, in a maximum amount not to exceed seven million to finance the acquisition, construction, renovation, installation, and equipment of a portion of the cost for two separate projects consisting of a new mixed-use five-story development at four twenty-eight Northeast Street, including a parking garage apartment building and retail restaurant space, and a new six-story building and a restoration of two existing historic buildings with office and retail restaurant space at six oh two and six oh eight Park Avenue, District Seventeen, and approves and authorizes other actions in respect. Mr. Dan Jacob of Block Twenty Development, LLC, shared that Block Twenty is made up again of two different properties at four twenty-eight Northeast Street, will consist of seventy-six apartment units, sixty-one market rates, fifteen workforce units at eighty percent A M I, two hundred and fifty-five space parking garage, and two active historic streets. The proposal, after much conversation, passed out of committee by a vote to ten and one. Extension by Counselor Holliday, Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Counselor Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. President. Abstain from this voting committee. I have customers in that area, so I think I should vote tonight, or abstain from vote tonight as well.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries a twenty ayes and one abstention. The next item on our agenda... The proposals two thirty-one through two forty-six are all rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission. If no counselor wishes to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? Seeing none, the proposals will pass into law. Proposal numbers two four seven through two four eight are rezoning ordinances certified for denial by the Metropolitan Development Commission on May the eighth, two thousand and nineteen. If no counselor wishes to call down the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will stand as denied. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? Seeing none, the proposals will stand as denied. There is no business under special orders public hearing, and there is no business under special orders unfinished business. We'll now proceed to special orders final adoption. And the next item on our agenda is proposal one one seven. Refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number one seventeen, two thousand and nineteen, amends chapter six eleven, Article Two of the Code Regarding Empowerment and Removal Vehicles. Counselor Simpson stated that this proposal came about when his younger daughter's car was stolen. He said that the towing with storage fees was a hundred and seventy-five dollars even though the vehicle was stolen. Counselor Simpson stated that his daughter was not only one affected by these outlandish fees, but many people in the city are affected as well. He said that the city controller is going to put up seventy-five thousand dollars into a fund for towing to cover the costs of the fees with regards to those whose vehicles have been stolen in our city. Counselor Simpson moved to amend proposal one seventeen. The motion to amend was seconded by Counselor Oliver, and the motion carried by a vote of ten to zero. Counselor Simpson moved, seconded by Counselor Scales, to send proposal one seventeen to the full council. What they do pass as amended recommendation, the motion carried by a vote of ten to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors?
Mr. President.
Counselor Simpson.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Robinson. This was a little overdue. I would like to thank the city controller. I'd like to thank Brian Madison at B and S, and Valerie, chief, deputy chief Valerie Cunningham at I M P D. This was a long time coming. I'd like to thank the staff, Barton and TK, for all their hard work. This took a while, took a while to get it done. I think this is something that the taxpayer, this is one of those deals where the taxpayer is a win-win situation. So, that this, I think this come in effect July the first after the mayor, hopefully the mayor signed it, will be coming in effect, and I appreciate everyone who supported this proposal. I think that as a council, we've done something today that the taxpayer, at least I know, I've heard a lot from a lot of people saying, just saying, "Thank you."
Any additional comments from councilors? Right? Seeing none, we will proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-two to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one fifty. Refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number one fifty approves and ratifies a declaratory resolution of the Metropolitan Development Commission for the Brookville Road-Irvinton Plaza Economic Development Area. Director Mack gave a brief presentation on the economic development area, the E D A, designation for Brooklyn Road, industrial corridor, and Irvinton Plaza. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of ten to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-one... All right. Motion carries twenty-two to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one five one. Refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. In committee, we actually heard proposal number two oh six, one fifty-one, and one fifty-two together. We already voted on proposal number two oh six. So, again, these are all connected. Proposal number one fifty-one approves and ratifies a declaratory resolution of the Metropolitan Development Commission to the North and East Block Twenty and Park and North allocation areas. Proposal number one fifty-two authorizes the economic development tax increment revenue bonds not to exceed seven million for projects in the Block Twenty and Park and North allocation areas. The proposal's passed out of committee by a vote of ten to zero to one, with Counselor Holliday abstaining. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Counselor Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, as these are related to the previous proposal on which I abstained, I think I need to abstain on these as well.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Was there additional comment from someone? Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you could just quickly clarify exactly what we're voting on with this vote, please.
I'm not sure that we asked for consent for, you know, to combine the two of them together.
I did.
All right. Okay. Well, then, we're voting on proposal number, proposals one fifty-one and one fifty-two. Thank you. Chairwoman Lewis. The motion carries twenty-one, ayes, and one abstention. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one fifty-three. Refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposals number one fifty-three and one fifty-four were actually heard together, but I will present them separately. Proposal number one fifty-three approves and ratifies a declaratory resolution of the Metropolitan Development Commission for the International Marketplace Economic Development Area and Tax Increment Finance District. Director Mack, Department of Metropolitan Development, and Director Martin, Mayor's Office, gave a brief presentation of proposals number one fifty-three and one fifty-four. Director Mack stated that the retail landscape in the area has shifted, resulting in significant vacant, underutilized buildings and parking lots, and that many buildings are considered obsolete in today's market. Currently, the economic development tool available in this area is the Community Revitalization Enhancement District Creed Program, which allows the ability to capture state sales tax and reinvest in the area. The pyramids at three hundred, three-five-hundred is a twenty-two million adapted reused vacant building in the international marketplace with one hundred and thirty units, mixed-use, mixed-income senior housing project. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of a... The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of eleven to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-two to zero. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 154, Refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 154 authorizes issuance of one-point-nine million in tax increment bonds for the cost of thirty-five-hundred allocation, thirty-five-hundred allocation area. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of ten to one. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-one ayes, one nay. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 185, Refer to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take the next seven proposals together. Thank you. Proposal Number 185 authorizes parking restrictions on Burlington Avenue from Broadropole Avenue to Maple Drive in District Two. Proposal Number 186 authorizes speed limit reduction to forty-five miles per hour on Meridian Street from Custer Boulevard-West Drive to Ninety-sixth Street in District Two. Proposal Number 187 authorizes intersection controls at Evanston Avenue and Sixty-ninth Street in District Two. Proposal Number 188 authorizes intersection controls at Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Street and Langsdale Avenue in District Eleven. Proposal Number 189 authorizes intersection controls at Indiana Avenue and Gent Avenue in District Eleven. Proposal Number 190 authorizes turn restrictions at Washington Street and Audburn Road in District Twelve. Proposal Number 191 authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the residential subdivisions near Sixty-second Street and Michigan Road in District Seven. Proposal Number, Proposal Number 185 was amended to only include parking restrictions on one side of the street instead of both sides per the district council's request. All seven proposals were supported by their respective district counselors, and the committee recommends adoption on all seven proposals by unanimous vote, and, Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-two to zero. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 192, Refer to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 192 approves the declaratory resolution designating the establishment of the White River Rocky Ripple Flood Control Improvement District. DPW Director Dan Parker and DMD Director Emily Mack appeared before the committee on April eighteenth, 2019, to provide a PowerPoint presentation regarding the designation of a flood control district for the town of Rocky Ripple and a proposed design plan for a new levee and flood control walls that was accepted by DPW, the town of Rocky Ripple, and Butler University through a memorandum of understanding. This proposal only approves the district for capturing incremental revenue to fund the project, but does not actually approve the plan, as the design cannot be completed until the designation area is approved. There were over twenty individuals who testified in committee, both in support and a few in opposition, to the plan. Concerns were raised regarding the design plan for the levee project, but not necessarily toward the establishment of the district. District Counselor Simpson was also in attendance, and he spoke in support of this designation. When the plan is finalized with the interlocal agreement between the town, the university, and DPW, they will come back before the council for further review and approval, as well as for funding approval. Again, Proposal Number 192 simply approves the boundaries of the flood control district and does not approve the levee plan. The committee recommended the proposal for adoption by a vote of nine to one, with Counsel Scales casting a negative vote. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors?
Yes, Mr. President.
Counselor Westler.
I'd like to call Director Parker up to the podium, please.
Is Director Parker in the audience?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Director. I appreciate your staying around and talking to us tonight. I have one question, and it should not take too long. When all this is implemented, and the new things, whether the septic tank system that's up there, which is very old and probably not very adequate anymore, will they be required to put in a sanitary sewer system to alleviate all these septic tanks in that whole area? And how would that be funded?
So there are people, there are representatives of the town of Rocky Ripple here in the audience, but with our conversations with Citizens Energy Group, yes, all of the residents of Rocky Ripple are on septic tanks now. Citizens Energy would like to coordinate bringing in sanitary sewers to the town and to the Butler University property, along, at the same time that we do a levee project. They would like that levee project to protect their asset, and therefore, you know, have the residents hook up to the sanitary sewers. Since it is a septic tank area, the residents would be eligible for Citizens Energy's STEP program, which is the septic tank elimination program, and the cost of that is twenty-seven-hundred dollars, and residents are given an option of paying upfront or having the cost attached to their sanitary bill.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Is there any, I don't think I have any more questions for him, but I appreciate you answering that. Thanks for staying around.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any additional comments, questions from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-one ayes and one nay. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 193, Refer to Ethics Committee. Chairwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 193, 2019, amends the ethics code to adopt a new provision requiring sexual harassment training for all city and county elected officials, counselors, and certain supervisory-level employees of the city and county government. Counselor McQuillan stated that this proposal was put together to bring Indianapolis up to the same level as the state and federal government to make sure that the city has good common practices in place to provide sexual harassment training for not only elected officials, but certain department leaders. HR will have all aspects of the training figured out, and this, the committee recommended sending this proposal to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion was carried by a vote of five to zero, and, Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-two to zero. There is no business under Special Service District councils, and there is no business under new business, so the next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. The docketed agenda for this meeting of the council, having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment. "By all counselors in memory of Senator Richard G. Luger. By all counselors in memory of IFD recruit David R. Short II. By Counselor McHenry in memory of Don Lace. By Counselor Cordy in memory of Cassie Wykes, Marilyn Krieger, Glenda Jo John, and Robert L. Strahl. By Counselor Holliday in memory of David Head. By Counselor Lewis in memory of Charles Moses Blaine. By Counselor Westler in memory of Curtis W. Romerel and Ronnie L. Tuttle. By Counselor McQuillan in memory of William Nathan Salin. By Counselor Harris in memory of Charles Thompson, Patrick Nix, and Michael D. Estridge. By Counselor Maschary in memory of Stephen Swartz and Nelson Hart. By Counselor Osley in memory of Lorenzo Crowell Jr. and Calvin Cap Donalds Jr." Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contribution of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask to support of fellow counselors. I further request that the motion be made a part of the permanent record of this body, and that the letter bearing the council seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counselor McQuillan. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and requests are so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we are adjourned.